This is the ZPA and here's the April 18th, 2013, meeting of the zoning board of appeals. And we have two matters on the agenda and our crack secretary will read the first one.
All right, our first one is Christine and Joe Donnelly, 140 Jericho Road, request special permit finding under MGL, Chapter 48, Section 61, of Choice, special permit finding to extend and increase a presence in nonconforming setback by adding in addition to our report to the 11th of December.
Denied? No. So you're...
First things first.
Okay, you're on the Bay side, I was gonna wonder, we were having a debate about the storm and I was wondering how much of the debris that was left on the harbor side came from the ocean side, so I was just kinda curious what your observations were. Before we get into Europe. Yeah, from the, from the, the two huge storms we had.
Yeah.
It's more comes...
Yeah, they're pretty lucky where they are.
Yeah, very protected in the harbor.
Okay, well, let's, actually, first things first, you said the, you are...
John Belson, contractor.
Okay, you're John, you're the contractor, you are Christine and...
Christine.
Okay, great, 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 all right. So tell, tell us what you're doing.
Well, we're just extending the farmer's porch on the left side to come around to the front of the house.
On the left side?
Well, looking at it.
From the street?
Yes, sorry, from the street, looking at the house.
All right, so you wrapping it around?
Yeah, it wraps around a little bit, but...
Yeah, 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 oh, I know that house, sure.
Yeah, it's pretty ugly right now.
So it currently on the, I guess, northeasterly side, you have a porch.
Yes.
The farmer's porch, and you want to extend it toward the street.
Right.
Around the northwesterly side.
Yes.
And it's eight, it's eight foot extending toward the street.
Yes.
But it is, is it, it is in a straight line? Is it in a straight line? Cause I'm trying, I'm, yeah, that's the lot line, okay, so...
But the house isn't parallel to the sideline.
Oh, I see, right, ah, so you're increasing the nonconformity on that corner of the porch, right?
Can I say this?
Yes.
De minimis.
Oh, come on, it's four inches.
Oh, it's four tenths.
No, it's two inches.
It's two tenths.
Two tenths of an inch?
That's 2.4 inches.
Okay, thank you for pointing that out. I may have to make an exception to my rigorous standard.
And are you gonna have access to the bulkhead in the same area? Through the, through the porch?
Yeah, a little string, access would probably be underneath and so it would be not much of an access there, probably go around the corner.
Is there another...
The bulkhead would be underneath the deck, yes.
Yeah, we're not moving it.
Okay, so the bulkhead's gonna say...
Yeah, we're gonna have to work...
Are there any utilities or stuff that you have to get out of the basement?
No.
Through the bulkhead?
No.
Oil tank or anything like that?
What's down there?
What's down in the basement?
Yeah.
Regular basement.
I mean, you, it's storage or...
Yes.
Well, nothing, you know...
Nothing, nothing that you value.
We're just, we're just what...
It's not a finished basement?
No, just by...
There was a condition, if we, if we condition this, that you have to weld the bit, the bulkhead shot. That's okay?
No.
Is there another entrance?
Lawn chairs.
Through the house, do you have an entrance?
Yeah, there's another way through the house.
There is?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Cause it would, we don't want you moving around the side unless that's not part of...
Yeah, no, bulkhead would not be put around the side, no.
All right.
But you could put a hatch in the deck.
The hat, like maybe a hatch on the side, but it wouldn't be a bulkhead coming off the foundation type thing.
Cause your deck's gonna be just above the top of the bulkhead, so you're gonna have to...
Yes.
Some way to hatch it.
So this is really, I mean, you know, aside from the roof on it, he wouldn't have to be here at all.
Yeah, it's just the roof.
Well, it's extending a nonconformity on, on the sideline.
But wouldn't be if it...
If there wasn't a roof, it'd be, right, it'd be just a deck.
And you know, there's no living space above it, cause it's a farmer's porch, right? So it's, you're just making a front porch.
Yes.
Yeah, just nasty in the wintertime type thing, you know? They, they think it looks like a Dairy Queen, I think they were trying to get away.
But in the future, you could...
You know, I pulled into your yard once.
But in the future, you could always recognize that as being the, the drip edge of the house and therefore...
Yeah.
Are you, the plan isn't, it appears you're not putting the corner in, you're not bringing that roof, you're not completing the corner of the roof, or are you?
To connect to the existing?
Yeah.
Yes, it would, it would connect to that with a little hip.
Okay, so there will be a hip roof, cause the plan, as I'm reading it, doesn't show that.
Yeah, that would connect to the...
So you got a hip...
Existing one on the left.
A hip roof in the area?
Yeah.
The northerly corner.
Much more attractive, I believe.
Yeah, it just doesn't show that on the plan.
Yeah, actually, you've got, so the deck, actually, the deck here is actually porch, right?
It's a roofed porch.
All right, so it's, okay.
What's existing here, on the plan that says deck is actually a roofed porch.
Oh.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's one, there's one little section of dark lines missing, correct?
Correct.
To fill in the...
It would seem so.
Right.
Right.
But you tell us, is that how we, am I correct?
Yeah, that's how it would be.
It's about, it's about four foot nine inches now.
But it would not, it would not increase the...
No, it's going away from the...
Well, actually, but the, but the nonconformity on the northerly, the northeasterly side is the roof of the porch, not the side of the house.
Right.
Which is showing as 12.5 and 12.6.
All right, very good point.
So you're actually going to, you're actually got a nonconformity on that side, which is falling away.
By the equivalent, right.
2.4 inches, presumably because the front and rear...
Okay, so are you following our nonsense here?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay, so the bottom line is, what we're, when we act here, before we, before I make the assumption, is there anyone here to speak for or against this besides the applicants? No, there is not, okay. Before building permit would issue, you'll have to get a revised plan that accurately reflects the, you know, the cornering of the roof from the porch, actually, you should probably rename the deck Farmer's Porch or porch.
Existing porch.
Existing porch, and then you need to draw in, in, in dark lined, the, the corner element of where, where it meets up with the new porch roof. Is that clear?
Mm-hmm.
Bye, bye. Okay. And what else? You all set?
Yes.
Okay, anything else for you? Did you talk to your neighbors?
Yes, everyone's very happy about it. House is gonna look...
Looking better.
Looking better.
Are you gonna stop serving ice cream?
Yeah.
Yeah, the Dairy Queen look goes away.
Okay, good.
I think, I think the concern I have, and I don't mean to make trouble for you, the assessor's card shows the property when they took a photograph, it, it looks like fiscal year 12, which shows a little doghouse door access over the bulkhead, and it doesn't show the porch over the, the roof over the porch on the northeast side. That was added sometime since.
Yeah, I'm not sure on that.
Ooh. How long has the porch been there? It's been there all...
Been alive since they've owned the house.
The porch, but I'm thinking the roof was put on probably without a permit.
Oh, no, let's, let's clarify, how long have you owned it?
2006.
Okay, was the roof, was the porch roof there in 2006?
Yeah, we haven't made any changes to the exterior since we moved in.
Yeah, you're, and you're looking below, you're looking at the comment below the picture that says FY12 quality change from GD to average per field review?
Yeah, I don't know what that means.
I don't either.
I don't know when the picture was taken, oh, the pic, well, actually, the picture that was taken is '03, it says photo 10/20/03.
Oh, yeah.
So between '03 and '06...
Now, I think we bought it in '08, right? September '08.
Funny, we can probably tell you exactly. Let's see.
It's on the deed.
It was February of '06.
No, that's not, no.
So the roof was put on without a permit?
Roger Williams to McCarthy.
Yes, ours should be September 2008.
Yeah, I think, yeah, Tom, we bought it from Tom McCarthy.
Why don't we have a deed to show that yours is yours then? The deed we have shows McCarthy ownership.
We have a deed here. I don't know.
Is this the one you have?
Is this the same one you're looking at?
No.
Joseph Donnelly.
Right, that's the one we should have in the package, cause it shows ownership of the property.
Okay.
September of '08.
That may have been me.
Book and page 36, 374, page 221.
Do you remember, well, when you closed?
It must have been close to...
I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm trying to go backwards, are you understand our problem here?
Well, it looks like whoever owned the property before us put a roof over the, the deck on the side of the house.
Right.
On that corner of the house.
Right, and with Neil out, Nicole, would we know whether or not that had a, well, it would have to come here anyway?
If...
If it did.
Yeah, to put the, to put a roof on that porch.
I can find out.
All right, this is, this is difficult, all right, but this is, we're, we're obviously pretty flexible here.
Is this the concept?
That's the concept, yes.
Yeah, it's beautiful, it's good, yeah. Yeah, my, here's, here's the problem.
My situation.
The problem is that we have a picture taken in 2003 that shows no roof on the, on the side deck, okay? So obviously, a roof was added between 2003 and 2008, or till you, you know, when you bought it.
2008 you bought it.
There was, there was a, a roof added. That, the addition of that roof would have required the owner to come here, because the deck is not subject to the side yard setback, but when you put a roof on it, it is. And in order to get that roof, they would have had to get a variance, which they could not possibly have legally obtained. So you have a roof that's illegal. Now, on, there's a statute that says, well, that's fine and dandy, but you can only enforce, and you can only bring an action against an illegal structure for six years, and at the end of six years, the statute of limitations expires. That doesn't really get around what the, the organic problem is here, but let's just go with it for a second. So if you bought it in 2008, if you put the porch on the week before you bought it, you got a problem, because the six years wasn't up yet. If they did it in 2004, and the six years is well past, and you've basically got a structure that's unenforcably illegal, and the, the roof would be, and we wouldn't hold that necessarily, wouldn't hold that against you perhaps in these circumstances.
Okay.
So, you know, with, with all that stated, what, what do you think? What do you think we can, what can we do for the Donnellys?
I just wanted to make sure that we don't have something that impacts them later. I want, if they're gonna invest money now, I want to make sure that they, no one can come back and have an issue with them. I'm looking at the plan of this deed, this is the deed that you gave to me. And it said it's, it's Joseph to Joseph and Christine in 2008, September 2008. Is there a deed that goes from, I guess that we, that's fine, we know that Joseph owns it.
Well, no, no, but let's see, it's like, oh, see, they don't give you the date on the title reference.
Right.
You remember that? This happens all the time. Obviously, you were the initial purchaser by yourself, and then you deeded the property from yourself to yourself and your wife.
Right.
Remember, do you remember what, how much time passed between them?
I don't know.
Well, somebody, somebody gave you the idea that you should put it, usually it's the wife that says, I wanna be on the title.
I think I was complaining at one point.
There you go.
I was.
That would be something that would be done, the house has been refinanced.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
A couple of times since 2006.
Okay.
No, 2008.
I mean, 2008, so that could have happened during a refinance, right?
Well, yeah, but, so, the question is, what's the original year you alone ended up on this deed?
When we, I think when we first...
2008.
When we first purchased it in 2008, September 2008, and then later refinanced, and when it was refinanced, her name was on the deed as well.
That makes sense?
No, because this is a deed from, from Joseph to Joseph and Christine, it's not a deed from, we just need a paper trail kind of thing. We're not...
Well, I know we bought it from Tom McCarthy.
All right, Tom and Sally McCarthy owned it as of February of '06. Okay, and then you two owned it as of September of '08.
Right.
But somewhere in between there, McCarthy gave it to you, sold it to you, and then you, you transferred title to the two of you.
And it wouldn't usually happen simultaneously. Usually what happens is you buy the house, you go to the bank, the bank says, who's, who are the borrowers? It's you and your wife, and that's the way the deed's made up. So when there's an interim transfer that goes from the seller to you, and then from you to you and your wife, it's you, there's usually some passage of time, could be six months, because the rates dipped, you know, by eight point, you know, eight, 800 basis points or whatever, but there's a reason why there's a gap, it doesn't usually take place right away.
This just happened?
You know, it might have happened pretty close.
Yeah.
Cause the book, the book is 36, 330 and 36, 347. You don't have to...
You know, the closing attorney could have made a mistake with the date.
And need to fix it.
It's a confirmatory deed.
Went down three days later, or whatever.
This is, this is a confirmatory deed to a...
Well, but it usually says confirmatory, yeah.
I mean, it's, it's clearly just a...
Right. Well, okay, so...
We're gonna, we're gonna accept this as ownership of the...
When, you know, I, I'm, but I, we need to get to the bottom of this anyway, cause we papered this over, you know, who knows?
Right.
Who knows what title attorney's gonna hassle him later? Okay, so when you originally buy the property, one of the things you get is a, I mean, you get a title certificate from the lawyer, from the closing attorney for the bank, who usually charges you more than he should, and says that his opinion isn't to you, it's to the bank, and then for an extra fee, you get it, the opportunity to, does this ring a bell with you at all?
Not at all.
Oh, okay.
Not at all. You, you close on the property, you sign, you know, 50 sheets of paper, done deal, refinanced a couple of times over the last few years.
Right.
Again, same thing, no, you know, no temporary deed or waiting period or any of that, it was all, I don't remember any of that.
Okay, well, this is, you know, this is why there's too many lawyers in the world.
Here it is, right here.
Okay.
9-4, 9-11.
A week apart. Okay, so that's 2008.
So this is how it's currently held.
Right.
This gives us our chain of, our chain from...
Yeah, but we're still, we still have a six-year problem.
Right.
And so what we're being asked to do essentially is vote to, on a special permit that's based upon, the nonconformity of which is based upon an illegal roof, which, you know, I don't even remember, I don't think in my eight years on the board, we've dealt with this situation. I mean, we've dealt with it plenty on instances where there's a structure or an addition that is well past the six years. We've chosen to ignore that and treat that as part of the nonconformity, because whatever the rationale was that was established by precedent or otherwise.
So we're trying to establish when the roof was put on?
Yeah, with, with the understanding that we really are constrained not to grant a special permit under Section 6 for when the basis of the nonconformity is an illegal extension. I mean, you know, I'm on my way out the door, so, you know, my inclination is probably less responsible than my brother's, but, let me ask you this, what's the hurry?
Oh, we gotta, go ahead, John.
Scheduled, you know, to get it done, get them in for the summer, you know.
What's Neil's recovery schedule?
He has like just a couple more weeks.
Couple more weeks?
Yeah.
All right.
Probably be back for our...
Okay, here's, here's, here's what I'd like to suggest. There's nothing I'd love to do more than just close my eyes and stamp this, you know, go to vote for this, but it really is not consistent with the oath of office that I, that I took. It's almost over. Anyway, and ordinarily, what we, what we usually, even if we voted tonight, a series of, you know, several weeks would go by between now and the time we actually get the decision filed. And so, but, and usually that's, you know, that's a month, if you came here with a lawyer, the lawyer can draft and give it to us tomorrow, and we'd have it signed, and you'd have it on record. I'm gonna suggest, for the benefit of the title to your property, and, you know, your long, sort of long-term future as property owners there, that we continue this till next month, so that we can get the building inspector involved in the best way to address how this takes place. Because there's no point in, I mean, you've already got a little bit of a title zoning issue with your property now, we don't wanna make it worse by doing something that we, we shouldn't be doing, so. And then, assuming we can resolve that problem, then when we voted, if we vote next month to approve this, we can just do the decision really quickly, as opposed to not doing it right away. So you won't lose any time off of your schedule, but, you know, we do need...
I understand, I have a suggestion, I don't know if...
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
I don't know if they'd be into it, but what about taking the, the roof that was put in illegally off?
Yeah.
I haven't, I don't know if they'd be for that, would that change matters here?
Yes, it would change immensely.
And, and we could pass, the front porch is what they wanna, you know, they wanna, wanna look at, to be, you know, a nice looking facade, and get out of the rain and all that stuff. Would that, would that...
Yes, that changes things.
Would that change everything?
Yes, it changes everything.
To you and to I, I have, I'm asking them this right now, too.
Does that change everything with you?
Oh, it changes things, because it's what's presented to us.
Take the roof off and maybe keep it as a deck, and then maybe go, you know, do the front roof.
Yeah.
Take the legal roof off, make that a deck for now.
Yeah.
Get you summer, and then if they want the roof back, go through the proper channels.
Yeah, but so, just bear in mind, you're not gonna be able to do that. I mean, you can come back and ask, but, you know, the fact of the matter is, probably the reason why that roof was put up without a permit was because it required a variance, and they knew they wouldn't get one, or couldn't get one, so they just went ahead and built the, the...
Okay, so if they lived without the roof, is that possible?
Yes, I mean, I, the, if, if, if the, the only thing, the only reason you're not already back at your house is because that side, there's no evidence that the side roof was built legally.
But if you can show that that side roof existed on the house, one year and four months prior to when you bought it...
It looks pretty old.
Then it can state it.
How do we test that? How, how do we do something like that?
See if you can find a photograph of it.
Hold on a second, hold on a second, we're, 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 we're gonna consult with our unofficial, why do you say 10?
What do you think?
If, if it hasn't, excuse me, my voice is gone tonight, but Steve Bjorklund, and I have two questions. One, is this, is the only nonconformity, that roof?
No.
Nothing else in the house that's nonconforming?
No.
No, it's nonconforming in a variety of ways.
Okay, so you can create a new nonconformity by special permit? So you can legitimize the roof?
No, we don't create new nonconformities by special permit.
It is allowed by state statute to create new nonconformities.
All right, I don't, I don't need that advice, go ahead.
That's fine.
Give me the statute, your statute of limitations thing.
If it's a, a addition that's put in the house with a building permit, after six years, it becomes legitimate. If it's without a building permit, it's ten years.
Okay, you're right, okay, thank you for that.
And the reality is, I've gone through the court case a number of times, any addition to a nonconforming single-family home does not require a variance. It's all done by special permit. So I, I do think you have the power to grant them a special permit, as long as something besides the illegal roof is nonconforming.
Which in this case would be the other side of the lot?
No.
Well, your sideline setbacks are eight feet. Your existing sideline setback on that, on that side was 11.8, but when you add the deck, which I'm guessing is approximately six feet?
Well, it's, it's five feet now, the setback on that side from, scales out to five feet.
Scales out to five feet, so it's about five. So that, so that creates, that creates a nonconformity that doesn't exist if you take the roof off. On the opposite side, the southerly side, you have nonconformities and your setback is, is too close. But your rear line setback, it says it's 39 feet. That's the, it says the 39, it's, it's showing on, on the zoning table, 39 feet for the existing, for rear line setback, but that's the...
And it says 37.1 on the, on the line? Oh, that's the new porch?
No, it's the rear line, he's using, he's using the, the lot width as his rear, rear yard setback. The rear yard setback isn't scaled out here at all.
As opposed to 37.1?
That's his front yard setback.
Oh, that's, okay, yeah.
And he's using 44.9, which is this one.
Okay.
It has to be 30, so that still stays okay.
Yeah.
But he hasn't scaled out the rear yard line setback, and I can almost guarantee it's not 20, well...
Well, it's about 27.
Is it about 27?
Yeah, a scalable scale of the rule.
You bring a scale, good for you. So, so it's okay, it's...
So I think the, the, the 37 probably should be a 27.1, isn't it?
You following this?
I believe so.
Cause we're gonna have to correct them, if you get a building permit, you're gonna have to come in with a corrected plan, so.
You're talking about the rear setback says 37, when it's 27?
Well, I think it says, existing at 39, and it should, well...
Yeah, it says 39.
It isn't scaled, that's the, that's the key. It isn't, it isn't drawn on the plan, but the number that's, that's in the table, which is more courtesy than anything, but the table is showing a number that is consistent with the lot width, not the lot setback.
All right, so let's just, let's get back to the, the, the nuts here, do you, you want the roof on the por, you know, you're willing to, if you're willing to take the roof off the side porch, we can deal with this tonight. If you're not, we're gonna need to figure it out between now and next month.
And it's conceivable that with the building inspector's expertise, he may, and experience, he's been in the office for 20 years, he may have had some experience as to when this
If you get a building permit, you're going to have to come in with a corrected plan, so...
You're talking about the rear setback says thirty-seven when it's twenty-seven?
Well, I think it says, existing at thirty-nine and it should, well...
Yeah, it says thirty-nine.
It isn't scaled, that's the, that's the key. It isn't, it isn't drawn on the plan, but the number that's, that's in the table, which is more courtesy than anything, but the table is showing a number that is consistent with the lot width, not the lot setback.
All right, so let's just, let's get back to the, the, the nuts here. Do you, you want the roof on the por, you know, you're willing to, if you're willing to take the roof off the side porch, we can deal with this tonight. If you're not, we're going to need to figure it out between now and next month.
And it's conceivable that with the building inspector's expertise, he may, and experience, he's been in the office for twenty years, he may have had some experiences to when this was done, that may shed light on it, but we just don't have that information tonight, in which case that, that roof may be able to stay.
And that's my first choice, to just, you know, take that existing roof that's...
I can see your plan.
Have it come right across, and it's a nice drawing.
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely, architecturally, it's a much better option, but...
Is there anyone in the audience?
It's just up to you guys.
Well, I, I'd like to have it done while the drawings are done.
Okay, so here's what we'll do. Where's, is Neil home recovering yet?
Yeah, he's home.
Yes.
I can call him, I can actually drive him home.
Eh, you know, it's like tomorrow morning, I just, you know, the idea is that we're, we're going to try to get to the bottom of this little thing here and...
Yeah, I can check it, I'll do some research to see if I can find a permit, and then when I speak with him next week, I can ask him to be...
And then we can address the extraordinary suggestion that notwithstanding, we're, we're entitled to increase nonconformities at will with, relevant to the...
You know, you may also want to check the assessor's office, they have, they have old pictures from old assessments, and you can determine...
Yeah.
Are you on, are you on good terms with Joe Bala?
Yeah.
He may have pictures of when his house was being built?
Oh, actually, two houses down, two, um...
Thornton's?
Thornton's, they might, we did, actually, I did some work there, they might...
But Joe may have, you know, his house was built, I think, in this timeframe, about, about two thousand and four, I guess.
Oh, I put it in the wrong spot, okay, I know, I know where it is now.
So if you, if, um, they may have a picture if you can show when it was there.
I mean, is that, does it all hinge on us finding a photo that's two thousand and six, or...
Probably the easiest.
Or building permit.
Or, you know what, or call, or call, uh, Mr. Uh...
McCarthy.
Call Mr. McCarthy and say, when did you put the porch up on?
He might, well, if it's illegal, he might not want to get involved.
Yeah.
Well...
Yeah, that's good.
The remedy is usually just take it off.
I have a big problem now.
Yeah.
The remedy is usually just take it off, which is what we're talking about here anyway, and we're not, we're not trying to advocate you do that. We just are, we don't want it to look like that you've got this permit.
We have a small problem. We're not, we don't want to make it bigger. And you understand, this is the board that grants everything, they'll tell you down across the hall, they complain about us all the time.
Well, what's your, what do you, what do you think? I mean, I know you can't, I mean, what do you...
If you want the porch roof now, the side roof, the side porch roof now, we cannot act tonight. We will continue it till next month, we will try to resolve that issue to, to, to enable that to happen in a lawful way, and we will act on it next month and, and then give you a decision much faster than we would if we just approved it. So, and, and hoping that you would not lose any time on your schedule.
Well, it's his schedule I'm worried about, not, not so much mine.
Well, yeah.
It's up to you guys, I mean...
Well, even if we...
I'm not going to tell you not to put...
Granted, today, he wouldn't have us...
What, what they're saying is, we have forty days to, to write the decision and file it with the town clerk.
Longer than that.
Ninety days. And we, and then there's a twenty-day period when people can appeal a decision, so if a neighbor comes in and appeals it, you'd be starting at your own risk if they appealed it and it went, so that could be another, that's a hundred and ten days, and, you know, it shouldn't happen.
No, no.
But, but what we're saying is if, if, if you take this time...
The ninety days are, are probably, we probably average sixty-five to seventy days, which is too much in my opinion, but I'm as much as, so, that's, you know, to get a decision, other than, the people that don't have lawyers that actually submit the decisions get their decisions, you know, within four to six weeks, maybe four to eight weeks. So what I'm suggesting is, let's try and take care of this problem, and then we'll, we'll try to, we will try, we will do what we can to reduce the amount of time slippage that you have.
Okay, so the best thing is to get a photo if we can.
The, it doesn't matter whether it's a photograph or a letter from the next-door neighbor or some, it doesn't matter who it is, doesn't matter what form it is, it's some testimony, photograph, photographic or, or oral or whatever that says, I know that this porch roof was built in X.
Okay.
We believe you when you say you didn't put it on.
Yes.
But the only evidence before us is, it wasn't there in oh-three, and it is there in thirteen. We don't have any evidence of what happened between those two, between that time. If it, maybe it was put in right after that, oh-three, um...
No, no, there's no name?
Neil could say, I permitted that, it's not in the file.
And then that's done deal.
Must have been lost.
Okay.
You know, we don't know, but we, we, it doesn't do you guys any, you're going to end up selling the, if you sold, if you had financial difficulties, had to sell the property next year, and a more diligent title attorney than the one that represented the bank when you bought it, looks at the title and goes, there's an illegal roof on this, we can't lend, you don't want that to happen.
Okay.
So, yes.
Is there a chance a special permit was issued on this?
Well, you know, it's not in the file.
That's...
It's on the file.
Someone, someone would have to be there.
I don't, I don't recall it.
Isn't the file that you have on this prop, it, it, when you, wouldn't you already know that? Wouldn't there already be a file on this property?
If, I mean, yeah, but, I mean, I wouldn't be able to check that when, when it comes in, you know what I mean?
Right.
Because the files go downstairs.
Oh, okay.
I have that version now, which I have, but once every, once a year ends, every, I mean, you could check with the town clerk, she could actually...
So check for town, special permit?
Let's get, we'll talk to Neil.
Yeah.
We'll start with Neil.
If you want to come in and see me, I will send them the right trash.
Okay, I'll do that.
All right.
It's a little bit of legwork now, will be well worth it for you later, and, and taking the four weeks.
The other thing is this, just so, just bear in mind, next month, we have a cell tower application, and what's the other one?
Dredging.
Oh, yeah, and then, yeah, there's a dredging, I don't know, is that going to be controversial?
I have no idea.
Okay.
I can't decide.
All right, so, and are we going to have it here, or are we booked here?
I have, yeah, booked here, but I cannot, I can change the location if we decide to, because I have a post in the...
All right, so if we change it, they're going to have to...
Yeah, you'll have to check, check with me prior to the date to, to...
For the location.
Because it may, we may have to move over to the high school, because when you do cell tower applications, people tend to get...
Can I put them on the, can I put them on the beginning of the, so they won't ever say...
Yes, yes, no, that was my point. My point is wherever, wherever it is, we won't make, you'll, you'll get on, you'll be up first on the agenda.
Oh, good, okay, okay.
All right, so we, a motion to continue to next month.
May sixth.
Till May sixteen.
Second.
You make the motion.
Motion to continue.
Second.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
May we keep this, um, this, this, Steve?
Yeah.
Sure.
It's a little bummed about that.
I know.
You know?
Sorry?
Yeah, really. You picked it up.
So hurry.
All right.
Hey, our second application is more...
Well, you know what, though, if they didn't do it now, they would have, they could have come back to harm them.
Yeah, no, really. Oh, you got them, okay.
I have them here, yes, because they're full-size.
Well, those are the drawings, those are the...
These are the drawings, what are you looking for?
I'm looking for a, I'm looking for a zoning plan like that, like right there.
A certified plot plan?
Yeah.
To scale.
Do we not have that? Did I?
They should each have a copy.
All I have is...
No, fill it up in there, fold it up.
Didn't come with your application.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did, I, I brought, you remember I had to bring in corrected ones, I corrected it.
That's all right, that's all right.
Nicole was out last month, she was, she was...
Grady Consulting forgot to put a couple of measurements on there.
Oh, hold on a second, that's yours? Is this the same plan?
I think I did.
Is this the plan?
Um, that's a good question, uh, I, I think so, the date is, I said, March twentieth, yes, because the, the problem was that Grady Consulting failed to put a couple of measurements on there, and so I had to go back to him and he had to supply me with another ten copies. So if there, if there isn't, um, you know, a front setback, then I have the old copy.
I apologize.
He's probably pulled out the corrected one.
Which, which end of Booth Hill are you on?
I am, I see, like, out of here north, um, on the east side, um, just steps from Mary Lou's.
Oh, okay, you're right on the corner?
Uh, I'm like three, uh, four houses up from Mary Lou's.
Are you, uh, so if I'm going towards three A, you on the left?
Uh, no, you take a right, past Phil Von Esterstein's house, down about a quarter mile on the left-hand side.
Okay.
He's the plumbing inspector.
I've come out of Mary Lou's, I take Booth Hill up towards three A.
Oh, if you're coming from Mary Lou's?
Yeah.
In the left.
I'm talking about the Mary Lou's at North Cityway, center, right, that's the transition, yeah. So if you come up and Mary Lou's is on your left-hand side and you're on Countryway, take a right, Booth Hill, on like four houses up on your right.
On the right.
On the right, yeah.
Up to Carl Pipe's Park, please.
Right, okay, all right, I got you. All right, so this is, why are you here?
Hmm?
Why do you need to be?
Uh, because I only have ninety feet of frontage apparently, and I'm supposed to have a hundred and twenty-five, I believe.
Yeah.
Straight line through the house, unfortunately, so it's pretty expensive, um, nonconformity, but...
What's your only nonconformity?
Um, I believe on the side, on my, on my, um...
Yeah, three foot.
Yes, but I'm not, I'm not changing any, any nonconformity on that side.
I didn't see.
So I'm demolishing a deck that's roughly fourteen by sixteen.
Right.
With a set of steps and building up a two-story addition, which, that's about seven hundred and fifty square feet, and then we're pulling the roof off of my family room addition, which is in that area where it's encroaching upon my neighbors, and just simply building a master bedroom and master bathroom on top of that existing family room, so not pushing out towards my neighbors at all.
Okay.
And that'll be about another three hundred and fifty square feet, so it's roughly eleven hundred square feet, added onto eighteen hundred and thirty-six, so it's about fifty-some-odd percent increased. And I have a full set of architectural drawings for the project if you need them.
I go by your house all the time.
Ours is known as the daffodil house.
Yes.
They've just burst in the past two days. Been spending my free time trying to get rid of the weeds in there.
Didn't bring us a bouquet?
Did you know how...
I should have.
Did you know how foul daffodils smelled before you bought the house?
No, no.
Don't smell them.
They don't last very long, though, they only last about three days, and then they're all just a big pile of weeds.
Have you ever smelled of daffodil?
Oh, yeah.
Jeez.
Is that what that smell was? I thought it was just my own breath blowing back in my face.
Ooh.
All right, okay, so, it looks, I know, I'm, I'm sorry, I, appearance has been, I figured that you were the builder and that these were the applicants, but we have neighbors?
We are representing next month, and we're here to learn...
Ah! Very smart of you.
Yeah, we're in the neighborhood, same neighborhood, and we're doing our homework.
Did you guys just purchase, or?
On, uh, Countryway, we just purchased.
Okay, just set down the street from us.
Good.
Yeah.
Good, 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 okay. All right, good.
Oh, just say, now, uh, on the back, the proposed addition is going to be the forty-six point three feet.
Correct.
And that's to the edge of the, where the addition meets the deck.
Yes.
And are there any stairs or anything else off the deck?
The stairs actually are within that footprint. Um, basically, they're not shown, but, um, on the, basically, the northeast corner of that deck would be the stairs.
Okay.
So it's within that same footprint, it's just, you know what I mean, it cuts into the, the deck.
All right, and there's no roof, obviously, no roof.
There's no roof on that, no.
Is the...
And it's my understanding that if there is no roof, then my deck, like, I could delete that and put it on the back if I wanted to, you know what I mean? Okay.
Is there no rear lot line on this plan?
Um...
Does it go back that far?
It goes all the way back to boot, uh, to, um, Bound Brook, and, uh, from what I can see, the wetlands, I'm, I'm like very far away.
Up as the upper right hand side, it's still three hundred and four feet.
Good lord, look at that lot.
I know, it's a lot, it's, it's, it's three quarters of an acre, it's a little bit more, it's like eight tenths, eight point eight four of an acre.
Oh, an alley.
Yeah, I like it, I think it's a, I mean, it's, it's, it's home. And the problem is, is I've got three boys under the age of eight, under the age of six, and our choice is either to move or to build, and I don't want to move, because I like our neighbors, I like where we are, you know.
He's two hundred feet from his rear line.
Yeah, don't, you know, I, I don't need, I don't need to see a rear line setback, but you got it anyway.
That's your two hundred feet, well, that's your two hundred feet from the setback.
Look at, he had to do a little cutout, he had to do a little inset to get the set, the rear yard setback. Amazing, okay.
But we still don't have lot, lot width through the house, but it's, it's approximately ninety feet.
Yes, yeah, I don't know why, um, I was, it seems like some of my project was an afterthought to him. They originally did my, uh, the septic for this house two years before we bought it, so it was on file, I figured it would be cheaper, but not necessarily a cheaper job.
Well, it's, your, your lot lines are more or less parallel, because they go for that, all that length.
Yeah, really, yeah.
They're more or less parallel in that area, so we're going to presume that the lot width through the house is approximately ninety feet.
Mm-hmm.
So, which, which needs to be one twenty-five, but that's, that's a nonconformity. Uh, the frontage is ninety and it should be a hundred.
Right.
The front yard setback, you, you are nine tenths more than the required sidelines, you're at three feet where you need fifteen, and rear line, you've got four hundred and ninety-five feet, some, some enormous number, and you only need, you need thirty, so...
Be nice if you could net them up.
Yeah, I wish. I wouldn't be sitting here right now.
We wouldn't either.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, anybody, any other inquiries of the Davenports?
I, um, your septic system, you don't, you don't do anything to that now, you have it?
No, it's new, I, my neighbor said that the house, the, the lot smelled for years, and they wished they had done something about it, and they did eventually in oh-six before they went to go sell it.
They didn't think it was just the...
The daffodils.
Darned daffodils.
Yeah.
I grew up in a place that, I had a swamp behind my house that was just loaded with skunk cabbage, and, uh, sc, I mean, it was great, it was a great way to grow. I had hip boots when I was six.
Yeah.
Okay, well, shall we take care of this?
Anyone in the audience?
No.
Um, my argument would be that the addition is well within the setbacks of the existing lot, the nonconformities are nothing that the applicant can do anything about, and And short of relocating the house completely,
To the right.
he's not going to do anything about the side yard setback, which is not being affected by the plan.
I would agree.
Yes.
I would also say, this is interesting, because for an addition, a net addition of fifty-plus percentage, this is probably the least obtrusive proposed, you know, addition of that proportion.
I don't know if anyone could even see it.
Yeah, no.
You should see the... It actually looks quite nice, too.
I'm sure, I, you know, this is good. All right, so, all right.
Do we have... Do we have data that tells us exactly the percentages?
Fifty-seventy.
That was my very, very... Yeah, very, very close. I mean, I did... I think it was conservative, too.
You're adding one thousand fifty to the eighteen thirty-six.
Correct.
Do we need a copy of the plan on file?
Yes. With the proper revisions? At the time of... You mean, on application for building permit, like we usually do?
At when I apply for a building permit.
Right.
Correct, yeah.
So when you go get your building permit, we're gonna make sure that in the file...
Refer to this one?
This plan?
Yes. Yeah.
The plan you have there is March twenty thirteen?
So what we're basically gonna do is, we're gonna give you a decision that says, if I may be so presumptuous, we grant you the relief process, on the condition that, when you apply for a building permit, you will provide an updated site plan that contains this information.
Which information?
Okay, and that information is...
Width through the lot?
Width through the lot.
Okay.
Through the house, and... And the calculation of the net percentage increase in livable space.
Okay.
Which would be on... Which would be on the building plan, not on the side.
Right.
So...
Right.
So the building plan should show that calculation.
And that square footage is concrete foundation outside to outside, like...
It's living area.
It's...
Living area?
How much living area you have now? Eighteen odd square feet?
Right, eighteen fifty, eighteen thirty-six, yeah.
Addition, living area with the addition, all right, and what the net increase is as a percentage.
Right, but I'm just talking about, what's the legal determination of living? Is it inside?
Don't have to include your garage.
I don't have a garage.
Don't include your basement.
Correct.
It's anything that's... It's the floor. It's the floor.
Okay, so you take off for the width of the exterior walls, is what I'm saying. Okay, so it would actually be less than fifty-seven. Okay, so I will figure that out and do that.
You know what? It's not, you know, it's not... You don't have to hire an architect to do this.
No, I've been a carpenter for thirteen years.
Good, good.
An example, if you had a mansard roof?
What's that?
You had a mansard roof like this?
Yeah.
You would not get all of that, you know, second floor that's the foundation.
Only from headbutt?
You wouldn't double the foundation. You'd only get a portion of that in the second floor.
Just from headbutt?
Right.
Six feet?
Yeah.
Floor.
Okay. All right, so make a motion.
Move to... You wanna go? Second today. You're the grand...
Okay.
You're the mover.
A motion to grant the applicant that sixteen Booth Hill Road, Moser and James, Davenport, a six special permit for the construction in addition to the pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling with an approximate additional square footage of fifty-seven percent located at sixteen Booth Hill Road. In addition to that, I'm gonna ask that he would submit a plan updating the width of the property through the house and an accurate square footage to be added on in percentage.
Excellent.
Second.
Second. That's at the time you apply for the billing permit.
Which, if... I have a couple of questions to ask you, but if...
Go ahead.
I mean, you can wait until afterwards. I heard you saying before that it can take as many as forty-five to ninety days for this to happen. Is it... So if I hire a lawyer to draft up a letter to hasten this, or... Okay. Because the faster that I can apply for my building permit, the faster I can go to the bank, and I can get myself a lower mortgage and only pay interest for the next six months, and...
What's the... What's the... What's the...
Who's up?
Who's up? Who would be up for Mr. Davenport?
I'd be one of us three.
I was actually gonna volunteer.
Were you?
It's the same plan I just did.
Oh, okay.
It's the same one I just did for Garden.
All right, so... So he's up?
But I get credit.
You will get credit.
He's good.
Um, let me just make sure I've got deed.
Just a couple of weeks ago, I got home from the meeting, and there was an email in my inbox with the draft decision.
Before you even got home?
I might be dreaming then. When was the next day?
It was the next day.
It was Henderson, I think.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, did you second?
I seconded.
Okay. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There you are.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome.
It'll be... I'm on vacation this week, so I'll get it drawn up by the first part of next week, and then the board, you know, the board members look at it to make sure I haven't made big mistakes.
Shouldn't stop you from applying, though.
Yeah.
What are you talking about?
Yeah, as long as I know that I can get a building permit, you know, then, you know, within the next little while, then that'll be good. Because I can start, like, saving myself a good fourteen hundred dollars a month in mortgage, because you only pay interest only during the construction period.
Nice.
So it'll help feed the three boys.
How much of the yard that goes back before it gets wet?
Uh, quite a bit. I mean, I've got... It goes straight back, probably...
Well, it slopes, too.
Hundred feet, and I've got a play yard, and then it goes downhill, because they built it up. And then I've got a fence, a chain link fence, because they had dogs, the previous owners, and we have a dog. And then there's a little door, and then it goes back another hundred feet, and then you've got the river. It's really quite nice.
Can you go from the back of the fence to the river without getting your feet wet?
Uh, yeah. Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Is it grass?
It's skunk cabbage. No, it's... There's some, yeah, wet stuff growing back there.
But it's like frog... It's adventure turf.